Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the City Council to order. Please join me in the council prayer. Dear God, today as the session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me now in honoring America. I pledge allegiance—
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To be public for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the temporary clerk please call the roll place?
Counselor Dakota?
Here.
Counselor Elliott?
Here.
Counselor Martin?
Counselor Mendoza?
Here.
Counselor Mercier?
Here.
Mayor Milonazzo?
Here.
Counselor Murphy?
Here.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Rita Mercier for suspension.
We're here too. You want to record us?
Counselor Caulfield?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Counsel Broderick?
Counsel Broderick?
Here.
Counselor Caulfield?
Here.
I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move for suspension of the rules to allow you to swear in the interim. City Clerk.
Thank you. Motion by Counsel Mercy, seconded by Councilman Mendoza. All those in favor of the suspension, please indicate by saying aye. Pose the vote. The motion that I would detain by Counsel Elliott, seconded by Counsel Dakota, was to appoint Donna McIntosh as temporary acting city clerk until such time as the city clerk resumes his duties. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the vote. If you raise your right hand, aye.
Aye.
Donna McIntosh?
Donna McIntosh.
Do hereby take upon the duties as temporary acting city clerk until such time as the city clerk resumes his duties.
I do.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Donna, for stepping up to fill in for Mr. Johnson. I also want my colleagues to know that the city clerk wasn't here last night getting the agenda ready so that we would make sure everything went smoothly tonight. So the Chair now recognizes Counsel Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in Docan Chamber for Lowell Police Officer Patrick P.J. Johnson, who was off duty and tragically killed while coming home from a family anniversary party. P.J. was the husband of four years to Lindsey Davis Johnson. He was the son of Carol and Richard Johnson, our Lowell City Clerk. Officer Johnson was a 1997 graduate of Lowell High School, and he served four years as a Marine during the Iraqi Freedom Era. He joined the Lowell Police Department in 2004, having served six years as a patrolman in the gang unit. Police Chief Ken Lavalley stated that Officer Johnson was reserved, unassuming, but earned the respect of his colleagues. He truly was a gentleman, an exemplary police officer, a good father, a good husband, a good son, and above all, a good policeman. Besides his wife and parents, he leaves a four-month-old infant daughter, Zoe, and a three-year-old son, Riley. His two sisters, Monica and Carrie, we in the City Hall are very devastated by this, and our hearts go out to the family. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mercier. Counsel Caulfield?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Officer Patrick Johnson served in the Lowell Police Department for six years, and he exemplified great leadership, the same leadership that he showed as a United States Marine in Iraq. A very devoted husband, father, son, brother, colleague. And although he only served six years in the Lowell Police Department, his commendations from Chief Davis and Chief Lavalley were immense. And that leadership he possessed, he became a role model for officers of all age, not only in the city, but throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Our hearts and prayers go out to Officer Johnson, his family, dedicated city clerk Richard Johnson, Pat and Officer Johnson's mother as well. In times like this, as when people pull together, the city is noted for that. And I know there's a trust fund that's been started, and we certainly will do everything we can to help Officer Johnson's family. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Counsel Caulfield. Very well done. Well, please rise now in Docan Chambers, a moment of silence. Thank you. May he rest in peace. It gives me a great pleasure to present a citation this evening to Emily Rosenbaum, who is the executive director of the Coalition for Better Acre. And Emily is here with us this evening, so if Emily, if you'd like to come to the podium. And for those of us that have worked in the nonprofit field for a number of years know the good work that Emily and the board of the Coalition for Better Acre, and especially the staff at the Coalition for Better Acre, have done over the years. And it is a pleasure for me to present this citation on behalf of my colleagues here in the City Council. Be hereby known to all that the City of Lowell and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts hereby honors Emily W. Rosenbaum for achieving excellence in community development bestowed by NeighborWorks America in collaboration with the Harvard University's Kennedy School of Government. Emily is one of only 49 leaders to graduate with this Achieving Excellence class, a prestigious and highly selective training program for nonprofit executives. As we all know, Emily is executive director of the Coalition for Better Acre. Emily's successful completion of the Achieving Excellence program is a testament to her exceptional skills and long-term commitment to improving our nation's lower-income communities and the lives of their residents. The entire city expresses its sincere congratulations to Emily Rosenbaum and the Coalition for Better Acre for being so instrumental in the community. The entire City of Lowell extends its deepest wishes to Emily for continued success given this 14th Day of September 2010 by James L. Milonazzo, the mayor, and my colleagues on the Lowell City Council. Congratulations, Emily.
Thank you very much. Could I bother you with a couple comments and an announcement? First, I just wanted to express all of our condolences from CBA to the families of Officer Johnson and also Officer Luminallo, who had such terrible tragedies this week. We are really thinking and putting our hearts out to those families and supporting all the efforts on their behalf. Secondly, I wanted to thank you for this honor, and it has been my honor and privilege to work at CBA since 2006. And since 2002, the CBA has been very active, as you know, in redeveloping the Moody Street area, the Merrimack Street area, and we've actually leveraged over $42 million of investment in that area, created hundreds of construction jobs. And next week, we're about to close on our next development project on Moody Street. Formerly, the Prince Charles Properties are going to be redeveloped as Unity Place Apartments. We're about to close and start construction, 23 new units. I also will pass to you this announcement. The Acre High School Apartments Lottery is now taking place, and there'll be information that you can get out to people about that lottery so that people can apply. The lottery will be held this month on September 23rd, and they should contact CBA for more information. So again, thank you so much, and—
You're very welcome. And thank you for all you do for the city.
Thank you for the honor.
Thank you so much, Emily.
I'm going to pass this along if I could.
You can just give it to Councilman Mendoza, it's fine. Thank you very much, Emily. Next item on the agenda, under City Clerk, the minutes of the executive session on August 10th, August 23rd, August 24th, special meeting on August 23rd, and then acceptance of the regular meeting on August 24th.
So moved.
Motion by Counsel Mercier, seconded by Counsel Dakota, to accept the sets of minutes as presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Pose, let's vote. Thank you. The Chair would like to recognize Counsel Caulfield. If you'd like to move that motion up on the agenda, would you like to suspend the rules?
Oh, thank—
We do have people here, and—
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Counsel Caulfield to suspend the rules to move. His first motion, I believe it's his first motion, I'm sorry, it's the third motion, number 48. Counsel Caulfield requests manager to address parking issues on Middlesex Street near Early Garage. Motion by Counsel Caulfield to suspend, seconded by Counsel Broderick. All those in favor of suspension taking up the motion at this time, signify by saying aye. Chair recognizes Counsel Caulfield.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for allowing the motion to be brought forward. There are businesses on Middlesex Street that were there when I was a youngster, and those same businesses are there today. One of those businesses is the Majestic Barber Shop, which I visit, many people in the city visit. George is just a great barber and always has a tale to tell. But last week, I went there, and he didn't have any jokes to tell. He was more or less complaining that he's losing customers, valuable customers, because across from the Majestic Barber Shop, there once was eight parking meters. And George indicated to me that the city removed them and only replaced two. And his customers, who normally park there, were receiving parking tickets, parking tickets that, for the meters that didn't exist. And he told me he lost three very valuable customers. They said they'll never ever come back because the meter maid seems to be extremely aggressive. And matter of fact, George the barber paid those parking tickets. He paid his customers. So he said, "Is there something you can do about the situation that exists?" I spoke to Manager Lynch prior to the meeting, and he said, "There has to be something that we can do to address it." Because those businesses were there long before any development happened at that neighborhood. And they were there before the parking garage and so forth. And the issue with the barber shop is, it's not like it used to be 10 or 15 years ago. You have to make an appointment. So if you have an appointment at 1:30 to have your hair cut, when you pull up, that chair is ready for you, and you're there at the most, 15 to 20 minutes. And that's what the customers are doing. They're pulling up to the area where there once was a meter, and they're getting, I don't know, what is it, a $15 or $20 parking ticket? And it's, he's losing, he's going to lose his business. And I know there's many people here who would like to speak about it, and I—
We have five people registered to speak, yes.
Yes, and I think I'd just like to bring it forward to the council that there were small businessmen and women, and if we just allowed this to continue, we're not going to only develop that neighborhood, but we're going to drive businesses out of the neighborhood. So that's the gist of the motion, and I appreciate you taking the motion out of order, allowing the people to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Caulfield. The Chair would like to recognize those that did register to speak, beginning with, again, I'm just going from the list, beginning with Karen Bell, who's here representing the club on Middlesex Street. Good evening, Karen.
Good evening, Karen Bell, 54 Dan Cars Road in Lowell, is my residence, and I am an owner of a business and a building on Middlesex Street. Bud, thank you for bringing this forward, but it is much more than about meters, really much more than about meters, but at least that gives us the in. The Jackson-Appleton-Middlesex Business and Residence Association was formed, and I'll call it JAMBR, from now on, was formed in order to foster development in the area, which was before that kind of rundown, foster development that would enhance our businesses and our residents in that area. The exact opposite has happened with the plunking of the registry down into the Early Garage. We had a meeting October 29th, 2009. Dave Nangle called the meeting at my request, and at the meeting, there were several of you here, present, the then-mayor Bud Caulfield, and city manager Bernie Lynch, our state reps, Dave Nangle, Tom Golden, and who else? Steve Pangiatakis. Also, there were Chuck Carney, the parking czar. At that meeting, we expressed our concerns, and I have the minutes of the meeting, and if anyone is really interested in them, I'll be happy to give them out, the meetings, the minutes, as they were then given out to the members of JAMBR and the other people in the neighborhood. And during that meeting, the concerns were the availability of street parking once the registry came in. All of our businesses on Middlesex Street are such that street parking is really critical because the businesses are such as George's, where they're not going to pull into a garage and travel up, spend 10, 15 minutes looking for a parking space, which does happen in that garage, and walk down, walk over to George's and have a 15-minute haircut. It's not going to happen. The people who come to work out at the club, my club, might go in the garage, and in fact, I validate at the garage. And since the registry went in, my validations have increased three times over, 300 percent. I could hardly afford it, it's really killing me. But I have to do it for my members. But people who are coming to the club for the first time, what do they do? They drive down Middlesex Street. The traffic is absolutely horrendous, people doing U-turns, people doing Y-turns, people not able to park, people double parking, people standing there because of the registry. And my people, anyone who is interested at all in the club, cannot find a spot. They're not going to pull into a garage and then come to look at the club to see whether or not they want to exercise there. And when you look at the things that were our concerns, we were talking about traffic patterns, we were talking about signage, et cetera. Those things, the traffic patterns were addressed, I believe, by a traffic study. There were certain things done, but some of the things agreed to in that traffic plan have not been done. Signage, there is a sign saying the RMV, and it is placed exactly in front of my driveway heading towards the RMV, which means people coming up Middlesex Street from the Lord Overpass don't see anything about the RMV until they stop right in front of the RMV. So that's where they all stop. Needless to say, not any of the concerns that we expressed, and we're promised, by the way, we were given promises by the people at the meeting, none of those promises have been kept. As a result, we are really facing a serious problem with all of the businesses. It's not just George's, and you know Bud from being at George's. It's Dave Garnick's, it's mine, it's Elliot Hotdog's for Pete's sakes. I mean, Elliot's facing problems with the parking. It's Garcia Brogan's. We're all in the same boat. Now, I know a lot of you are probably thinking, you know, "Well, this is a recession. You know, the recession hit you, Karen. The recession hit you, Dave. The recession hit you, George. I mean, you know, suck it up and don't look for somebody to blame." But I had an increase 30 percent above the last five years in my last fiscal year, 30 percent higher. I was doing very well until June 15th. And if anyone would like to come and look at my books, but I can also substantiate that by saying that in the past year, as many of you know, I redid the men's locker room, I redid the women's locker room, I redid the group class area, I redid the childcare area, all through two substantial small-business loans. And you don't get those if your business is not doing well. Well, it tanked, and it tanked on, actually, on June 15th, June 15th, the day the registry opened. Since then, I have been down 20 percent. Now, you might say 20 percent isn't much, but that was 30 percent up last year. I'm down 20 percent since last year. That is a 50 percent down from the last five years. And I can directly attribute it to the registry and the traffic and the problems with parking. I hope that you will be able to do something. Some of the suggestions that I would have is make sure that the signage for the registry sends people down those areas that do not have small businesses which necessarily need that parking space. You can send them down Marston Street around Jackson, and you can put signs up. Right now, nobody knows. I've talked to people standing in the registry line, I do it every day. It wasn't the people of Lowell who are standing in those registry lines, even Drake at Tinsborough or everybody else, they haven't been in Lowell, they don't have a clue about Lowell. And I say to them, "Why didn't you park in the garage?" "Well, garages cost a lot of money." I said, "It costs you the same thing to park in the garage as it does on the street." "Well, there's nothing apparent about that. Maybe if you look at a website someplace, you might be able to see it." But those people coming into the registry aren't going to be looking and looking for what it costs to park in the garage, they're going to try to find street parking. So right now, I look at Lowell as being a very business-unfriendly city. I've tried to work for 20 years with this city, and I think you all know that I've really tried hard to be optimistic, et cetera, but I can see the writing on the wall for my business. I'm sure George can, and I'm sure David can. David's business is recession-proof. What does he do? He fixes TVs. Nobody's buying TVs, they're having them fixed. How come David's business is down? Well, guess what? No one can unload a TV. Where are they going to go? Anyway, I hope you will. You have the power, you have the ability. Hopefully, you will see that there is an absolute need, and you will put your thinking caps on. We have a lot of good ideas in our neighborhood. We'll be very happy to discuss them, and hopefully, we can find and resolve some of these issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen. Our next speaker is George Futsalis, Majestic Barber Shop.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, city manager. My name is George Futsalis. I own the Majestic Barber Shop at 50 Middlesex Street. We've been in business in Lowell since 1921. We have been on Middlesex Street for the past 31 years. Since the registry of the motor vehicles opened its doors, the street has been full of cars. There's no signs to direct people that have to go to the registry to go to the garage. This makes it very difficult for our customers to park. Some of my customers park in the garage, but sometimes that's almost full between the registry, Middlesex College, and their own people that park there. We also have problems with the parking meters. They're either broken or missing. We've lost customers because of these situations. One solution, there's an empty parking lot across the street that's not being used. My understanding is that the city owns it. You could park between 50 to 60 cars there, that could help. Any help in this matter would be greatly appreciated for myself and the rest of the businesses on the street and the area. I don't want to go out of business because of parking. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Vinet Khan, 74 Middlesex Street.
Hi, how are you? Appreciate Karen for pointing out with the parking, and I've recently opened a small business on Middlesex, and the first day, I got welcomed by a parking ticket. Park at the loading zone in front of my business while we're doing loading, more than 30 minutes, probably 45 minutes. The lady doesn't care. My business is martial arts school. The reason we get martial arts school in Lowell because I have seen a lot of messed-up kid, the at-risk kid, obesity kids. So therefore, my good friend Elizabeth Caulfield and I tried to get the MMA bill, make martial arts bill approved in the state of Massachusetts. What I see is that if we bring martial arts to Lowell, we're going to increase more traffic, more business to Lowell. But again, it turned out to be an unfriendly business welcome to Lowell. And I just wish that we have more parking, you know, in front of that section along with the business zone. And I really appreciate you pointing it out because, like Karen said, people, they just want to check out the club. Why bother, you know, why would they park in a parking garage just when, you know, a couple dollars, while they can just, you know, stop by? If they couldn't find that, they would have just drive past, and has probably moved themselves to, you know, outside the city. So to me, if, you know, we can get some alleviation from the city with the parking would be great too. Thank you.
Thank you. David Garnick, 54 Middlesex Street.
Mayor, city councilors, and city manager, all of the people on Middlesex Street need help, and they need help now, not in a year, not in five years. We need help now. Now, two more or five more parking meters are not going to help. All the people from the registry come in, come over there to park. How do I know? Because approximately 20 come in the store every day, they have change for a dollar. We give them change. The bank will not give change because it's just good business to be nice to people. So what are the answers? We need some more answers. I've come up with two ideas. As George said, there's a parking lot directly across the street growing weeds with a new fence. Maybe they got the fence up to keep the weeds there, I don't know. That'll hold 60, 70 cars. I understand the city owns it. All they have to do is open up the gates, put a sign up, registry parking. To me, not working for the city, it looks like something that could be done in a day or two. Worst that happens, they'll have to paint some lines there. I volunteer to paint the lines free. The second suggestion I had, which I discussed a little earlier, was having the registry validate parking in the parking garage, free parking for registry customers, like they had in the hotel for years, actually, from when it was made. Now, the question arises, who will pay for it? I wish I had the answer to that, I don't have that answer. The registry makes enough money, I'm sure they can pay for some parking. I don't think the city can afford it, I don't know about the state, but the registry attracts all these people, and they have an obligation to protect the businesses, they're part of the Commonwealth, and not drive the businesses out of business because people are coming to the registry. Now, when they originally were going to put the registry in there, I went to those meetings too, and I heard the figure, there's approximately 80 people per hour. Could be wrong, but that's what I heard. Now, if they can get 60, 70 people in that parking lot across the street, that will alleviate the problem greatly, and put up a sign, free parking for registry people. So anyway, the businesses there are hemorrhaging. There has to be something done quickly to help all these people out, or they'll drive them out of business. And I went down Merrimack Street on the way up here, saw a lot of empty stores, and one of their problems is the same thing, parking. So we asked the City Council and the city administration to do this quickly and see if they can't get the lot opened, that doesn't seem like a big project to me, and do something to help out all these businesses, taxpayers, and good citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garnick. Our last speaker, attorney Brenda Mailey.
Thank you for allowing us to have this opportunity to speak, and thank you, Counsel Caulfield, for giving, presenting this motion. My name is Brenda Mailey, I'm a resident of the City of Lowell. I reside at 630 Princeton Boulevard, number 5 in Lowell. I'm also a business owner, I have a law office at 9 Middlesex Street. I've been located at 9 Middlesex Street for 27 years. I share office space with Bratton &amp; Springer. And just for a frame of reference, Bratton &amp; Springer in my law office is near the corner of Central and Middlesex Street, across from the parking lot of the Washington Savings Bank. First, I want to thank all the current and former city councilors and city officials who supported the Early Garage. The Early Garage is a fantastic benefit to the neighborhood. I can certainly tell you that while we still do have these parking issues, one issue that has been alleviated is the fact that we who work in the area on a long-term basis now have a place to park our car, as do some of the residents and the Charter School and the Middlesex Community College. I have, I've been a monthly parker at the Early Garage along with my employee, and I know the— I know the employees of Bratton and Springer are also monthly parkers at the garage. So thank you very much for that. And for all of those naysayers who were opposed to the parking garage in prior years, I can certainly tell you that there has been fantastic use of the garage on a long-term basis. But that's really not the issue here today. The issue is a little bit different today. And as you can see, the neighborhood is well-organized. Karen Bell has done a Herculean effort over many years now that the neighborhood is being developed. She keeps the neighborhood together. She's in, she heads the Jambra organization. And over these years, she has had, she as well as the other business owners in the neighborhood have had fantastic ideas on what can be done in order to improve the business community. I think that really should be the first source that the city goes to. When there's changes being, taking place in the neighborhood, when there is something that will be a major impact on the neighborhood, the first source would be to contact the neighborhood, contact the business owners, and let them have input in the ideas. You can see, just from the prior speakers, there were fabulous ideas, and they can offer some of the solutions that maybe the city doesn't have because the city officials and the employees aren't dealing with it on a day-to-day basis. I will tell you, I think what needs to happen is there needs to be a better partnership between the neighborhood and the city. There is a fantastic partnership between the neighborhood and the Department of Planning and Development. From the onset of the development of that neighborhood, the Department of Planning and Development has been in constant contact with the Jambra organization. As an example, all of our email addresses, addresses are had by the Department of Planning and Development. We were notified on a day-to-day basis whenever there were major impacts on the neighborhood regarding the construction of the Early Garage. We knew when a street was going to be closed. We knew when there would be excessive noise. We knew when there would be excessive dust. We were kept abreast, and I want to applaud the Department of Planning and Development on such a wonderful relationship. That having been said, there were many meetings over the course of the Early Garage development, and as part of those meetings, parking officials were also present at the meetings. Parking Department is aware that the city has the email addresses for us, and if, at the very least, he could, the city could email Karen Bell, who then could disseminate the information to the other people. So this isn't really rocket scientist. It's rocket science. The city already has the information at your disposal in order to make this happen. But it doesn't happen. Even when the neighborhood takes the initiative to call a meeting, and we do appreciate the attendance that was at the meeting that Karen mentioned, there were wonderful ideas passed along, but then the ideas apparently died at the meeting, and there was no follow-through. So we need a better partnership and relationship with the Parking Department and other city departments related to this, so that we can work together so that these problems don't get to the point where we need a motion to be brought before the City Council, and then everybody is complaining. This shouldn't happen because it should be nipped in the bud. Let me give you a few examples of how advance notice would be helpful to the neighborhood. One incident that particularly irritated me and most of the other businesses and residents is when the Registry of Motor Vehicles went in, the parking practices, the ticketing practices of the city changed. We had no notice of the change. There are old-fashioned parking meters from Central Street up to the Registry of Motor Vehicles, on the odd side, on my side, and then on the even side, there are old-fashioned parking meters from Central Street up through about where the club is. On those parking meters, there is absolutely no signage or notification as to what hours the enforcement is in effect on the parking meters. So somebody pulling up to a parking meter will look on the parking meter, puzzled, and say, "How long, when do I need to feed this meter?" There is no signage, there's no signage on any of the poles. You would have absolutely no way of knowing what time parking enforcement is in effect at those meters. There is signage on the new parking kiosks that are located in front of the Early Garage, so that's not a problem. So when the regi, the typical practice, and I, again, I've said I've been there for 27 years. The typical practice was that there was no meter enforcement after 4:00 to 4:30. The meter maids were not present. So what we would do is our clients, we would tell our clients, or if we had to park quickly to come in and out, "You can park in, you know, pay the meter, but typically, you would not get a ticket after 4:00, 4:30." Well, immediately after the Registry of Motor Vehicles went into place, everyone got tickets at 5:15 and 5:30. We were even unaware, we were unaware that the enforcement even went past 5 o'clock. So I sent an email to the Parking Department, because I do try to keep in touch with them whenever there's a concern. And my concern, again, was not so much that we got the tickets. My concern was, we had no notice that the policy or the practice had changed. And the response that I got, and I did get a response, and I do appreciate the quick response I always get from the Parking Department, the response was, "The parking hours are 8:00 to 6:00. They've been that way forever. You're on notice." And that wasn't my concern. My concern was, why didn't anyone tell us that you were going to change the practice? So that's what I'm talking about, about the relationship between the businesses and the Parking Department. Thankfully, because of that and because of notices that Karen had sent to the Parking Department, they did waive those tickets for a period of three to four days. So we did have our tickets waived for three to four days, and that was much appreciated. But again, it took our initiative to bring this point up to the Parking Department. When Middlesex Community College first went in, not this year, but the year before that, it was my understanding that Middlesex Community College was told that all of the students had to park in the Early Garage, that they would no longer be allowed to park at the Lowell Locks Garage, which I believe is the name of the garage next to the hotel. As a result of that, on the first day of classes, it was absolute and utter chaos on Middlesex Street. The parking garage was full. We were denied access. Those of us who had monthly passes were denied access because the entire garage was full of Middlesex Community College students. We were never notified. We had no idea. We came into work that day and were faced with that, and it was extremely troublesome. Again, as soon as we notified the Parking Department, they said, "You have to let the monthly parkers in," and they did. They let us in and made sure that we got spots before anybody else got a spot. But again, the lack of notification was troubling. Similarly, when the Registry of Motor Vehicles went in, we weren't notified. Of course, most of us knew because we read it in the paper, but that shouldn't be our first line of notice. Our first line of notice should be, as a courtesy from the city and the Parking Department, that a major tenant is going in that will impact parking. Received no notification of that, but we knew. And I do have to say that this year, when Middlesex Community College came in, the parking situation improved, and I believe it improved because of initiative taken by Karen Bell to make sure that the Early Garage was not the exclusive parking garage for Middlesex Community College. It is my understanding that the college students now park among three garages in the city, and that would be, I think, the Market Street Garage and perhaps the garage off of John Street. So that helped considerably. So I guess those are my concerns. And again, the park, the concern about the five missing parking meters, that has been in place now for months. I don't think it's our job to notify the city that there are parking meters missing. And when the parking meters are missing, the parkers are ticketed. So not, you're losing valuable space where somebody could park by virtue of the fact that there's no parking meter. That, to me, is unacceptable. So it shouldn't take my sending an email, Mr. Caulfield setting a motion, to have these matters addressed. They need to be addressed in advance. The city needs to take the initiative to explore that, have somebody come down there and check on it, or to schedule and, you know, send a, send a notice. Department of Planning and Development has all of our emails. I don't think it would require huge effort to pass that information along to the Parking Department so that they also had it. Again, and I just want to address one issue about the parking with the parking lot that has been referenced.
I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap up.
Okay.
You can, you can address this last point.
Okay.
We do have a five-minute rule, which I did not tell people, but...
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. I, I think, I just don't want the council to misunderstand and make, and feel as though we don't appreciate the Early Parking Garage. This, the parking lot that they're talking about would be a surface lot. They would be an easy-in, easy-out, quick parking, whether or not you even, you could even put parking meters in there just to enhance the parking meter section. That would be addressed to alleviate people feeling the need to park in the long-term garage. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Maylie. Thank you.[1208.28][1208.28](APPLAUSE). Counselor Caulfield?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing this motion to come forward out of order. I appreciate it. I want to thank the people who come down and who spoke and testified about the parking situations. And I'd just like to pick up the comment of Brenda Maylie about the Early Garage. Can you imagine if we didn't have the Early Garage? There'd be 900 people looking for someplace to park. So thank God we have the garage. And, Mr. Manager, it is a double-edged sword. I attended the meeting when the registry was going in, and there was two options. The registry would either move into a public building in Lowell, or they would relocate the Havel, or Woburn, or Reading, or whatever, and the Lowell delegation said, "We can't allow that to happen. We want to keep the registry here and servicing the people." And I supported that. But the, the issue before us, Mr. Manager, I'm just gonna ask if you could meet with the business community and see if we can come, come to some agreement. Legally, I don't know whether we can tell the registry that all the customers must park in the garage. I don't know if we can do that, but I'm bringing that forward. I don't know whether we can insert on the parking meters, these meters, a one-hour parking for the businesses on Middlesex Street. There's many options. I don't have the answers, but I think these businessmen and women are willing to sit down and come up with a, working with you and your administration, to come up with something that's sensible. For instance, the people who are parking where once a parking meter was, and they're getting a ticket, you're never gonna see those people back. And we can address that immediately. The parking lot or the empty lot, can we utilize that? I think we have to tip over every stone and look far and wide to see if we can come up with a solution. And I, for one, don't want to see these businesses move, because I don't want to see George the Barber move either, or the Club Fitness, or Garnick's TV, or Brenda Maylie, and so forth. Those people have been there for decades, Mr. Mayor, and it's a shame if we're creating economic development, and by doing it, we're driving a little small businessman and woman out of the city. So that's the gist of the motion.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Just if I may, Mr. Mayor, response to Counselor Caulfield, as well as the, the people who've spoken, we're certainly anxious to work with the, with the business community throughout the entire city and certainly in the, the JAM area. And I think the, the evidence of that is clearly the, the city's commitment, the city's stepping forward to build the, the parking garage. We have a $21 million parking garage there that, you know, we have to pay for. And we're, we're trying to balance having the right tenants in place, and I know there's disagreement about the Registry of Motor Vehicles, but I do think that in the long run, that's, that's making the, the Early Garage affordable for the city, and it serves an important purpose, as, Councilors, you've pointed out, for the residents of the city, that they can continue to have a registry right here within the city bounds. We will, we're certainly interested in working with the, the businesses, and I know I've had numerous conversations with, with Karen, and I had a very good conversation with Mr. Garnick today regarding some of his ideas. And we're, I just learned myself tonight about those meters. And I know that when I'm, I, I frequent some of the businesses down in that general area, and that's generally where I park is along the meters on that side of the street. I never noticed to myself that those meters were gone. So, but we will, we will look at that. We're gonna be looking at that parking space. I think we have to do a full analysis of the, of the parking usage in the area, and then we'll, we'll sit down and work with the businesses to see, let them know our findings and let them, give them some sense of, some ideas we have. Here are their ideas, and see what we can do to work it out. It is a double-edged sword. I mean, our whole goal here was to redevelop that area. With that redevelopment comes activity, and that activity is going to have an impact on existing businesses. It's gonna have a, it's gonna transform that entire neighborhood. Certainly, the parking garage is making possible the development that's gonna be taking place behind it, the Aden Furniture Building and the old CMAA Building, that's gonna bring new businesses and new residents to the area that are gonna use all of the businesses that are there. I'm sure there are gonna be people that live in those residential units or employed by the Community Health Center that are gonna need to have their hair cut. They're gonna need to belong to a gym. I'm sure they'll need to have their televisions fixed as well. Hopefully, they won't need a lawyer. But, but in any event, you know, it's all part of an overall plan, and there's gonna be a few hurdles along the way, a few bumps, but we're anxious to work with, with everyone to make it as easy as possible.
Thank you. Anyone else want to, Councilman Donza?
Yeah, I'm glad that the, these businesses are coming forward with ideas on how to solve some of these at the same time. And one of the ones I heard, and it's not the first time I've heard it, is that we need to direct traffic better into the parking garage for the RMV, especially that surface area in the back. So I think the idea about putting the signage for people coming from Lord Overpass, so they go down and behind the garage and then in, you know, have all that signs all the way around to make it easy for them. And otherwise, they're gonna come all the way down looking for parking in front, and then eventually think they've gone past it and are lost and panic. So I think if the signage is further, are closer to Lord Overpass, directing around the parking garage, it would be a much better situation.
Thank you. Counselor, Marsha?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it is an excellent motion that Counselor Caulfield has. Some time ago, when the registry first moved in there, I made a similar motion. How will the registry impact the traffic and the parking in that particular area? We got a response back that everything was under control. Evidently, it wasn't. I, I felt bad for certain business owners that contacted me and said, "Gee, the business was flourishing for so many years. It closed up, and then we took a chance again for the second time. We, we were unloading our truck, and we got a $20 ticket." You know, I hate to hear things like this. Customers came, parked, went in to get a couple of hot dogs, and came out and got a $20 ticket, went right back in and made the owner pay for it. I mean, how does that, is this good business sense? How do we try to say that one entity should try to be a good neighbor to the rest of the businesses, and we as a city are not? So this is something that we have to work out because, you know, businesses are vital to the city. Their customers get hit like this, they're not gonna come back. And so, they didn't come before us tonight and say, "This is what I'd like you as a city to do." They offered suggestions and offered a way to make things work, and I think we can make it work. Proper signage, directing them in to the, to the garage, that the meters outside are gonna be the same as if you park in that side area. They'll let people know. I think information is crucial. I was under the impression that ticketing stopped at like 4:30, 5 o'clock. I didn't know it continued to 6:00. So naturally, you're gonna tell your customers, "Well, you don't have to feed the meter. We wanna be helpful. Don't feed the meter after 5:00. Nobody's gonna ticket you." Now, all of a sudden, we're gonna be ticketed, and we were ticketed? This is lack of communication with the businesses. We're right there to grab the money. We ought to be right there to say, "We're gonna help you. We're your partner. We want you to flourish, because when you flourish, you know, the city flourishes." And so, I may not get a haircut from the Barber, but I think I might need a TV fix. But this is a good thing, and we want to keep people here. So that's an excellent motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed? It's a vote. Thank you all very much for coming out, and you'll be hearing from Manager Lynch. It being public hearing time, why don't we go right into the public hearings? The first one is a vote, accepting the provisions of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 39, Section 23D, the Mullin Rule, which permits board members who miss a single session of an adjudicary hearing before city boards or commissions are able to vote on, on the matter. Does the manager want to enlighten the council, or should we, Counselor Martin?
Oh, I was just gonna move to approve.
No, it's gotta go to public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Before we open it up, Mr. Manager, is there anything you'd like to, in the way of presentation?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, no, I don't have a formal presentation. This is a, a recommendation that's, that's been made, that we adopt this, this change in statute to allow... been made, that we adopt this, this change in statute to allow for the members of our boards and committees, including the city council, that they don't necessarily have to be in attendance at all parts of a, of a hearing in order to participate and vote. Oftentimes, particularly with our land use boards, we run into problems that a member is unable to attend, and the result of which is they cannot participate, for part of the hearing, and the result of which is they can't take a formal vote, or take part in the vote, which then produces problems for getting the necessary number of votes for a particular action, thereby requiring the applicant to go through the process once again. So, this is a, a section of the statute that many communities have now adopted, and we think it would be very helpful to do it here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Before I open up the hearing, I'd like to tell my colleagues, or remind my colleagues, that we'll have the hearing, we'll close the hearing, and then it gets referred to the city clerk's office until our next meeting, at which time we'll vote. So, at this time, I would open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor of accepting the provisions of Chapter 39, Section 23D. All those in favor? In favor. Hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Those wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition. In opposition, the public hearing is closed. Refer to the clerk for a vote on September 28th by Counselor Mendonza, seconded by Counselor Mercier. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? The vote. Thank you. Next public hearing, ordinance, Chapter 266, Vehicles in Traffic, quarterly ordinance in city council, and ordinance amending the new code of ordinances for the city of Lowell, the code with respect to Chapter 266 thereof entitled Vehicles and Traffic. Public hearing is now open to those wishing to speak in favor. In favor. That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Those wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition. That public hearing is now closed. What's the wish for the council? With approval by Counselor Caulfield, seconded by Counselor Broderick. Roll call.
Counselor Dakota?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Mendonza?
Yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Mayor Melanazzo?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Broderick?
Yes.
Counselor Caulfield?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Thank you. Next up, public hearing in city council vote to accept the layout 2010 alteration plan for the new bridge over the Merrimack River and Northern Canal in the city of Lowell. Is there a presentation, Mr. Manager, or should we go just to public hearing?
Perhaps, Ms. Barton, would you, interested in making a brief presentation?
I don't have a formal presentation on this either. This is typically before you any alteration to the right-of-way in the layout in the city. It's reviewed by the city engineers. They approve that. It ultimately has to be recorded. We're on a very fast time track for advertising this project, so these votes are pretty crucial for us tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open for those wishing to speak in favor. Chair recognizes Mr. Goldman.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Lowell City Council, Mr. Manager, staff, ladies and gentlemen, for the record, my name is Mark Goldman, 58 Oakland Street, Lowell, Mass., and wish to be recorded in favor of this. It is an important thing that needs to be done to get this bridge built, and in light of that, you also have before you the easement, construction access, permanent license agreements for this, and I urge that all of these be passed, because they're very, very important to deal with that bridge that needs to be done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? In favor, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Those wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition. Public hearing is now closed. What's the wish for the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr.?
Counselor Mercier?
Do we know where that opening is going to be? Is it be, going to be facing Merrimack Street, Patekett Street, or where is it going to be? Merrimack Street?
It's going to be facing Merrimack Street.
The new bridge, I should have mentioned, essentially is aligned with the end of Merrimack Street as we know it now, and would go really right through the building that you see there. It then angles slightly and intersects back at the current intersection, which will be reconfigured slightly, but it will meet there again, so it's just angled.
Sure. Thank you just for the information to the public.
Thank you.
If I may, it's essentially the same layout that the council has seen in the prior plans.
Right. Thank you.
Counselor Caulfield?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the manager. Mr. Manager, this has been under design with Mass Highway for at least five years or so.
Correct.
And the same direction of the bridge is going to go diagonally across the river.
That's correct.
That's the same plan, isn't it?
Exactly.
Yeah, and that plan is sensible. It makes immense sense. The traffic is going to flow, and I understand with this plan, there'll be a separate exit to go onto the VFW highway, so people won't have to more or less wait in traffic. It'd be a three- or four-lane bridge?
It's only a two-lane, two-lane bridge.
Two-lane? I thought they were going to build it so they could expand it to maybe four lanes.
Well, the intersection is modified. It will absolutely operate more efficiently and will be coordinated with the signals on the other end. I'm not sure that I'd describe it as a separate ramp to VFW, but it's an improved intersection, and it would have two approach lanes for turns and so forth.
Yep. Okay. If I could, perhaps Ms. DeMayo would like to, the city engineer would like to weigh in as well.
End it fine. The new bridge is going to have a left-turn lane, a straight-through lane, and a right-turn lane. So, if you mean a separate exit, there will be a left-turn lane at that end of the bridge that will be directly for that, but not a separate exit, but a lane, yes.
And how many lanes, Lisa?
The bridge is going to be technically one lane in each direction with a bike lane and a sidewalk.
Right.
And then, at the ends of the bridge, it will widen out a little bit for the turning lanes. But the main part of the bridge is going to be one lane in each direction.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion to accept the provisions by Counselor Murphy, seconded by Counselor Mercier. Roll call.
Counselor Dakota?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Mendonza?
Yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Mayor Melanazzo?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Broderick?
Yes.
Counselor Caulfield?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Thank you.
Is that the Richard Howe Bridge?
Yes.
Okay. Just thought I'd bring it up.
The next public hearing is a petition by Lowell General Hospital for 20,000 gallons of additional storage. Any presentation or discussion before we open the public hearing?
No.
No. Public hearing is now open for those wishing to speak in favor of the petition for additional fuel storage at Lowell General. All those wishing to speak in favor? In favor. That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Those wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition. Public hearing is closed. What's the wish for the council? With approval by Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Broderick. Any further discussion? Just for the record, I'm a trustee at Lowell General, so yeah, actually, I'm going to vote present. Roll call.
Counselor Dakota?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Mendonza?
Yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Mayor Melanazzo?
Present.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Broderick?
Excuse me, I am a...
Corporated.
Corporated. I will also vote present. Thank you.
Counselor Caulfield?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
Thank you. Next stop, public hearing conduit location Verizon, request 501 feet on University Avenue, 300 feet on Patekett Street, and 20 feet on Jackson Street. Public hearing is now open for those wishing to speak in favor of the request. Those wishing to speak in favor, that portion of the public hearing is now closed. Those wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition. Public hearing is now closed. This gets referred to the wire inspector by Counselor Martin, seconded by Counselor Elliott. All those in favor of referring it to the wire inspector signify by saying aye. Opposed? The vote. Last public hearing, conduit location National Grid, request 85 feet Merrimack Street. Public hearing is now open for those wishing to speak in favor. Name and address, please.
Hi, Michelle Stacy Drake at Mass. I'm a representative for National Grid. We're petitioning Lowell for 725 Merrimack Street to lay 85 feet of conduit for the church that they're converting into a multifamily.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? In favor. That portion of the public hearing is closed. Those wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition. Public hearing is closed. This too gets referred to, hold and refer it to the wire inspector by Counselor Caulfield, seconded by Counselor Martin. All those in favor of referring it to the wire inspector signify by saying aye. Opposed? The vote. Thank you. That concludes the public hearings this evening. Moving back to the city manager's Communications from city manager, responses to council motions and requests. Does anyone want to be heard on the information that we received from the city manager? Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe it's a little bit premature, but on, under the city manager, Number 22, which is an order for a 60-day trial for the traffic regulations in various locations, I made a motion some time ago, and it said that my motion would be placed on the next agenda, September 14th, for a 60-day trial, when I asked that, it was in regards to two 15-minute parking spaces at 447 Central Street, which would be for the DLKV Club, which is the Lithuanian Club, and the, I guess, the traffic engineer went out there, someone went out there. I don't know. Do we have a traffic engineer?
Oh, we're in the...
And did go out there, and they did say that they spoke, and the best order of business would be to have a, accommodate a loading zone, and that would be better, and everybody agreed to that, and it would be on the agenda this evening, and it is not. So, through this request, I'm asking, when we get to Number 22, if we could suspend the rules and allow this to go in there as well. I have the paper that says that. Is that okay?
That's fine.
All right.
Thank you. Anyone else on motions, responses? Hearing none. Motion by Counselor Mendonza, seconded by Counselor Martin to accept the communications and place on file. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed? The vote. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, the appointment of Deborah Grossman to the Lowell Historic Board. We have a communication from the, from the city manager. Dear Mayor Melanazzo, members of the council, pursuant to the authority vested in me as city manager on the Section 5A of Chapter 566 of the Acts of 1983, I have appointed the following person to the Lowell Historic Board, Deborah Grossman Esquire, 176 Star Avenue, Lowell, as the Greater Lowell Bar Association member to fill the vacancy of Michael Talte, whose term expired February 28, 2011. Under the above referenced statute, confirmation by the city council is required for this appointment, hereby requested. I would be happy to answer any inquiries that you may have concerning this appointment. Except the communication placed on file by Counselor Mercier, seconded by Counselor Mendonza. All those in favor signify by saying, I'm sorry, I'm going to ask for a roll call, if I could.
Before we do?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, may I please state for the record that this person does live in the city of Lowell, because there was some talk that this person probably didn't live in Lowell, and that's absolutely not true. Perhaps the office is not in Lowell, but the person that is being appointed does live in the city, and in fact, was a former chairperson of that committee as well, so I want that to...
And actually, not just accepting the communication, we're actually approving the appointment.
That's right.
Correct. So, motion by Counselor Mercier, seconded by Counselor Mendonza to approve the appointment. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Dakota?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Mendonza?
Yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Mayor Melanazzo?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Broderick?
Yes.
Counselor Caulfield?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item, item number 10, resignation of Kevin Kavanagh from the Board of Appeals. We have a communication from the city manager. It's actually to Mr. Kavanagh, acknowledging his letter of resignation. What we would need to do is accept the communication. Mr. Kavanagh resigning by Mr. Elliott, Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Broderick. All those in favor of accepting the communication and place on file signify by saying aye. Opposed? The vote. Next item, item number 11. In city council vote, authorizing the city council to ratify and approve the execution by the city manager of the memorandum of understanding between the city of Lowell and the Lowell Regional Water and Wastewater Utility Professional Group, SEIU Local 888, Chapter 159. Motion to accept by Counselor Martin, seconded by Counselor Broderick. Discussion? Counselor Caulfield?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. How many employees, Mr. Manager, will be receiving the 6% pay increase?
There are eight employees in this unit.
Only eight?
Only eight.
Eight?
Eight.
And approximately, what's the average salary, $40,000?
Comes to about $30,000, this settlement.
Okay.
It's about $19,000 in wastewater, and about 11, a little bit more in water.
I know that, I was out at the waste treatment plant, and I respect those employees immensely for the work they do. But I think we, did we make a presentation or gave those employees a certificate of thanks for their great work with the government audit?
Right.
There were 33 employees.
Right. This does not cover all of the employees in wastewater.
It's only a small segment?
This is a small segment in wastewater, a small segment in water. There's a larger unit in wastewater that we're still negotiating with.
I went through the document, the vote, and there's no retroactive pay.
That's correct.
And they're not receiving any pay increase for the last three years. They're getting a 6% pay increase.
That's correct.
Because they didn't receive anything for the last three years, so nothing is retroactive in this vote.
That's correct.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Manager, the disagreement only goes to the 30th. What is the, what is your logic behind that? I mean, we're already, we're essentially approving a contract that has expired, right?
Correct.
Or it hasn't expired.
Right. It just, now it, that only covers that period, so their rate basically gets adjusted moving forward.
Okay.
That 6%, and they, they're, like several of our other units, they're now in negotiation again.
For?
For this year, moving forward.
Okay. Thank you.
One last question, Mr. Mayor. Did the abbot come down with this ruling and...
This was a mediator.
Mediator?
Right. The mediator worked with both sides over the last year and a half to try to come up with something, and this was ultimately what we, we felt was fair and reasonable.
So, the mediator come up with this ruling, and it was more or less...
It's not really a, it's a mediation as opposed to an arbitration, so it's really not a ruling, but it's a, she tried to bring both sides together. Needless to say, both parties started from far different positions. As the city's finances became more clear, we saw it, it made sense to get this behind us and put this agreement in place, and the unions saw this as being an opportunity to settle up and basically do the same, move on.
And I noticed on the health insurance plan, the employees have agreed to go to the less expensive PPO?
Well, they've agreed to allow the PPO in place as an option. It's not, it's not require, it does not require them to use the PPO, for that matter. They already have the HMO, which is the cheapest version.
Oh, okay.
But they don't, they still have the Master Medical available to them at this point in time, but up until now, it was either the Master Medical or the HMO. This now allows us to put the PPO on the table for them.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Dakota?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Mendonza?
Yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Mayor Melanazzo?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Broderick?
Yes.
Counselor Caulfield?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, in city council vote, authorizing the city manager to execute a temporary construction easement, a temporary construction air rights easement, a permanent air rights easement, and a temporary easement from Boot Hydro Incorporated to the city of Lowell for the University Avenue Bridge over the Merrimack River and Northern Canal in the city of Lowell. Motion to approve by Counselor Mendonza, seconded by Counselor Broderick. Any discussion? Counselor Elliott?
Could you just give us an explanation, Mr. Manager, exactly what this and the other easements?
Right. All of the, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Barton in a second, but all of these easements relate to the, the location of the University Ave, a bridge, or the Howe, Richard Howe Bridge, and the, sort of the roadway coming up to the actual bridge. In this particular case, Boot Hydro controls the canal that runs... bridge. In this particular case, Boot Hydro controls the canal that runs underneath the bridge and adjacent land to that. We need an easement to be able to go over that. We have been working with Boot Hydro. They've been working cooperatively with us. We still need to get the necessary signatures on the paper, but they have been a, a partner in, in working with us, and have committed to execute this easement and make it possible. So, similar to the cooperation we received from Boot Hydro at the Hamilton Canal Project, they have come forward and are working with us on this infrastructure.
We can't proceed with the project without these easements.
That's correct.
Thank you.
That's correct.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Council Dakota?
Yes.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Council Martin?
Yes.
Council Mendoza?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Mayor Melonazo?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Broderick?
Yes.
Council Coffield?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, in city council vote, authorizing the city manager to enter into a construction access permit with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts acting by and through the Department of Conservation and Recreation, DCR, which principal offices at 251 Causeway Street, Boston, Mass. 02114, to allow access to and work to be performed on parcels in which DCR has an interest. Motion by Council Elliot, seconded by Council Dakota. Any discussion? Roll call.
Council Dakota?
Yes.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Council Martin?
Yes.
Council Mendoza?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Mayor Melonazo?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Broderick?
Yes.
Council Caulfield? Nine yeas.
Thank you. Next item, in city council vote, authorizing the city manager entering to a license agreement with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts acting by and through the Division of Capital Asset and Management, DCAM, which principal offices at 1 Ashburn Place, 15th Floor, Boston, to allow access to and work to be performed on parcels owned by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Motion to approve by Council Murphy, seconded by Council Martin. Any discussion? Roll call.
Council Dakota?
Yes.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Council Martin?
Yes.
Council Mendoza?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Mayor Melonazo?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Broderick?
Yes.
Council Coffield? Nine yeas.
Next item, in city council vote, authorizing the city manager on behalf of the city of Lowell to accept the gift of the deed to 791 Pataka Street, Lowell. Motion by Council Broderick, seconded by Council Elliot to approve. Any discussion? Roll call.
Council Dakota?
Yes.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Council Martin?
Yes.
Council Mendoza?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Mayor Melonazo?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Broderick?
Yes.
Council Coffield? Nine yeas.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council Martin.
I would make a motion that we consider items 16 through 21 and items 25 through 37 all at once.
Second?
Yes.
Seconded by Council Broderick, that we take items 16 through 21 and 25 through 37 all at once. All those in favor of taking those items as a package, signify by saying-
I have the numbers wrong.
Item, item 26, not 25, Mayor.
I'm sorry?
Do I have the numbers wrong, Madam Solicitor?
Just 25 is the loan order.
25 is the loan order.
So it's 16 through 21 and 26 through 37.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of taking them together, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the vote.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question on one of those.
Yes, Council Caulfield.
Reading through the communications, and I agree wholeheartedly to use this money to address the energy issues at our schools, but one of the requests was to replace the generator at the Stock Close School. Am I?
That's, that's not in this vote. That's in the-
Okay, fine, but I will bring that up.
Right.
So I should probably just, let me just read one vote, so we get a vote on the, on the table. Vote authorizing school superintendent submit statement of interest in, to Massachusetts School Building Energy Conservation. It's for the Riley School, the Washington School, the Maury School, no, just the, okay, on those particular items. And then we have the, a vote authorizing superintendent submit a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority regarding energy conservation measures at the Cotton O'Connell School, Lowell High School, Laura Lee School, Malloy School, Riverside School, LeBlanc School. So those are the, those are the votes. Council Mercier.
Mr. Mayor, could I just explain to the viewing public what's happening here? Because it seems to me that in May of 2008, we, the council has voted to support a loan order to borrow a certain amount of money, and, and when we did, $350,000 is left over, so oh, that's not right now?
No, that's not, that's not-
Oh, we're not doing that right now?
That's actually being referred to a public hearing. That's not, that's not in front of us now.
Oh, we're going to do the public hearing on this one.
No, but, no, the, the motions you have in front of you right now are motions related to a, a, an energy program that the state is putting forth through the school building program. And even though we, as you know, the city council approved the Amoresco loan order that some months ago, this money is now available through the state, which will allow us to decrease, this is, provides us with state financial assistance to decrease the actual amount that we have to borrow for all of the energy improvements related to these school buildings. So we're, we're taking advantage of that, that we already have the, the planning work done, we have the projects ready to go, and so we're submitting all of these applications, and it's a two-step process. It basically requires that the city council authorize me to file a statement of interest, and then is also a requirement that the city council approves the superintendent to sign on to the application as well.
So is that all the nine schools or?
That's all of these other schools that we, we have here in all of these other motions.
Okay.
We also, the acting clerk just informed, we, the Moody School is also part of this as well. Council Elliot.
I just wanted to ask just a couple more questions. What type of, is there a limit? Is there a threshold as to what we're applying for, and what that money can be used for? And I'm going to support this, of course. Just curious what, you know, what we're eligible for, or what monies are out there.
The guidelines, at this point, aren't clear, and it's up to their loan committee to, to actually make the determination of what qualifies, what doesn't qualify. We're going to apply with everything that we're doing for the energy projects on those, on those schools. So we're applying for the most that we can possibly get.
Thank you. Council Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to ask, on what basis were some schools selected over others? But I take it from the discussion that these are the schools we had selected to do energy efficiency work in already, perhaps because they're older than the newer schools that were built. Is that how we end up with some schools and not every school on this list?
I don't know who to answer to.
Wait, wait, the, do you want to take a shot?
I, I actually have a question into both Amoresco and the school department as to why they chose those particular schools, but I haven't gotten a response yet.
Okay. But this is at least what the school departments identified as being, that they're interested in pursuing.
That's correct.
These same schools are on the school committee agenda tomorrow evening.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Council Caulfield.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe that the Washington School, the Malloy School, those schools are 100 years old, and they need that energy efficient work to be done. And the Riley School, we know, there's issues there with energy, the windows obsolete and so forth and so forth. I think that's what they base their recommendation on.
Mayor, do you want to?
Again, this is much if not all of the projects that will be applied for here are come out of the performance contract project, the Amoresco project that was submitted to the council several months ago. This, you know, we've done this on a couple of other cases too, where even though the city council authorized us to borrow the money to do these energy improvements, rather than simply move forward with those projects and pay the debt back as we, we are enabled to do, we've been trying to track down other monies, grant monies from the state government, in this case, or the federal government, that we can put towards this project that will in the long run reduce the amount that we actually have to borrow, so that the payback to us is even faster. So in, in this case, these projects came out of that work that was done by Amoresco, and they've been working cooperatively with us, as has Jay Lang from the school department.
Any other questions? Again, there are 18 votes now that we're going to take as one. No further discussion. Roll call.
Council Dakota?
Yes.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Council Martin?
Yes.
Council Mendoza?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Mayor Melonazo?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Broderick?
Yes.
Council Coffield?
Yes.
Eight yeas.
One absent.
Absent.
Right. Next item is a, an order, 60-day trial, traffic regulations, various locations. In city council, in city council order pursuant to chapter 266 of the Code of Ordinance of the city of Lowell concerning section 266-6 thereof entitled temporary experimental regulations, temporary traffic regulations are hereby implemented for a period of 60 days. Actually, let me read the entire order. Pursuant to chapters 266 of the Code of Ordinance, city of Lowell, concerning section 266-6 thereof entitled temporary experimental regulations, temporary traffic regulations are hereby implemented for a period of 60 days, whereas the city of Lowell desires to make temporary rules regulating traffic under actual conditions for a period of 60 days, and whereas chapter 266 of the Code of Ordinance of the city of Lowell, section 266-6 thereof entitled temporary experimental regulations, authorizes the city council to make such temporary rules for a period not to exceed 60 days, now therefore being ordered, adjudged, and decreed by the city council of the city of Lowell as follows, effective immediately for a period of 60 days thereafter, the following temporary traffic regulations shall be implemented. Section 266-65, loading zones is hereby amended by adding the following, Carney Square South, beginning at 1.60 feet east of the easterly curb line of Prescott Street, running easterly a distance of 20 feet. Section 266-65, loading zone is hereby amended by deleting the following, Carney Square South, beginning at 1.40 feet, 43 feet east of the eastern curb line of Prescott Street, running easterly a distance of 20 feet along Carney Square. And then section 266-51, parking time limit between 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., except Sundays and holidays. 15 minutes is hereby amended by adding the following, Carney Square southerly, beginning at 1.80 feet east of the easterly curb line of Prescott Street, running a distance of 20 feet easterly along Carney Square. Second reading, again by title, in city council order pursuant to chapter 266 of the city Code of Ordinance, the city of Lowell, concerning section 266-6 thereof entitled temporary experimental regulations, temporary traffic regulations are hereby implemented for a period of 60 days. Let's wish of the council.
And with, and I'm amending that to include a loading, 60-day trial for a loading zone at 447 Central Street, being the DLKV Club?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Motion by Council Mercier to amend the, the order to include the address that she just mentioned.
447.
Okay. Seconded by Council Caulfield. All those in favor of amending the order as presented, signify by saying aye. Now a vote on the order itself. Motion to approve by Council Mendoza, seconded by Council Dakota. Roll call.
Council Dakota?
Yes.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Council Martin?
Yes.
Council Mendoza?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Mayor Melonazo?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Broderick?
Yes.
Council Coffield?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Thank you. Next item, in city council vote, amending an August 24, 2010 vote, which authorized tax increment financing agreement with, with Winstanley Enterprises to instead authorize the same financing agreement with 10, actually 1,001 Pataka LLC, whereas Winstanley Enterprises is the manager of 1,001 Pataka LLC, and whereas 1,001 Pataka LLC is the owner of 1,001 Pataka Street, Lowell, and whereas the appropriate contracting party for 1,001 Pataka Street, Lowell, is 1,001 Pataka LLC. Now therefore being voted by the city council of the city of Lowell, that the city council of the city of Lowell authorizes the city manager to execute the existing tax increment finance agreement for 1,001 Pataka Street, Lowell, with 1,001 Pataka LLC as the owner of said property. Second reading by title, in the city council vote, amending an August 24, 2010 vote, which authorized tax increment financing agreement with, with Winstanley Enterprises Incorporated to instead authorize the same financing agreement with 1,001 Pataka LLC. Council Caulfield?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a justifiable request. It's just changing the name, and I move for approval.
Motion by Council Caulfield to move for approval, seconded by Council Mercier. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Council Dakota?
Yes.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Council Martin?
Yes.
Council Mendoza?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Mayor Melonazo?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Broderick?
Yes.
Council Coffield?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Next item, in city council ordinance, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinance of the city of Lowell, Massachusetts, with respect to chapter 290 thereof entitled Lowell zoning ordinance by amending various vehicle-related sections, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Lowell as follows. The Code of Ordinance of the city of Lowell, here and after called the code, adopted by the city council on December 23, 2008, as amended, is hereby further amended with respect to chapter 290 thereof entitled Lowell zoning ordinance adopted December 7, 2004, as amended as follows. One, see attachment A, it's fixed here too, and made a part hereof for the specific changes to the zoning ordinance, which is actually is attached to this document. And then two, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage in accordance with, with section 1.7 of the Lowell zoning ordinance and the provisions of chapter 43 and 48 of General Laws of Massachusetts, approved as a form by Christine P. O'Connor, city solicitor. This actually gets referred to the planning board. Motion by Council Martin, seconded by Council Elliot, to refer this ordinance to the planning board for their action. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post the vote. Next item, in city council, loan order, school bonds. To amend a loan order adopted by the city council on May 13, 2008, to include improvements at other school buildings. It is ordered by the city council of the city of Lowell by a two-thirds vote as follows. That the loan order adopted by the city council on May 13, 2008, and approved by the city manager on May 14, 2008, authorizing the borrowing of $20,300,000 for improvements at the Maury Elementary School, is hereby amended to include improvements at the other school buildings throughout the city, and said loan order is to read as follows. That the sum of $20,300,000 is appropriated for the constructing, originally equipping and furnishing a new elementary school, Maury Elementary School, including the demolition of the existing buildings at the site where the new elementary school will be constructed, and for improvements at existing schools and all costs incidental and related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the city manager, is authorized to borrow $20,300,000 under Massachusetts General Laws, chapter 44, Massachusetts General Laws, chapter 70B, or any other enabling authority, and that the treasurer is authorized to file an application with the Municipal Finance Oversight Board to qualify under chapter 44A of the General Laws, any and all of the bonds, and to provide such information and execute such documents as the Municipal Finance Oversight Board may require to these purposes. This actually gets referred to a public hearing on October 5. Motion by Council Elliot, seconded by Council Mendoza, that the loan order would be referred to a public hearing on October 5. Council Martin.
I believe this is what Council Caulfield raised earlier, and I think I certainly share the same concerns. I support it going to a public hearing, but we're looking at almost $100,000 replacement on what is the newest school. So I think, you know, at least for the public hearing, I'd like to know why that is. And I know there was litigation with various parties, maybe there's settlement agreements that impact that, but it seems like we should have got more life out of this emergency generator than a couple of years.
Council Caulfield.
I just want to just weigh in what Council Martin indicated. First of all, I want the, the general public to know, we're not going up for another $20 million loan order. We're not doing that. We've already done that. But what we're doing here is to find ways or means of- But what we're doing here is to find ways or means of expending some of that money to other schools for their needs. The generator across the pumping station on Princeville Boulevard has been there as long as I've been, and every time we have an electrical problem, the generator starts The generator at the stock close the school is five years old. Now, either someone did something to damage the generator, or the generator was no good from the beginning. I'd like to have those answers for the public hearing, and if, you know, somebody created an error and put something in the generator to damage it, let's hear that. But if the generator is not functioning, then we should go back to the contractor or whoever furnished us with that generator to get our money back or some compensation. That's, okay?
Mr. Manager?
If I may, on a couple of points, Counselor Caulfield mentioned that just wants to assure the public that we're not going out and borrowing $20 million again, and that, as he's correctly pointed out, is far from the case. In this particular situation, we had an estimate of what the cost would be for the Maury School. We went out, we borrowed the necessary money, we got the necessary reimbursements. We came in under budget, we came in basically on schedule. Because we borrowed the money, we are now in a position where we have to use the money, otherwise we violate certain federal regulations, arbitrage regulations, as to the use of tax-exempt money and just holding on to it and gaining interest on it. So, we have to use the money in some way, and certainly we have an accumulation of capital needs in our public facilities, particularly in our schools. So, that's what we're coming forward with. We have a couple of ideas already of ways to use the money, including at the Maury School, with a couple of things that were omitted in the original plan that we think we can address at this time. With regards to the generator, I will have a more formal report for you at the public hearing. We don't have that for you tonight. It is, as you correctly pointed out, it's about five years old. One would think a generator would last considerably longer than that, but we will have a formal report for you at that time as to what happened and what the problems were.
Counselor Mendonza?
Yes, I believe we all received a communication from a parent of a Maury School student pointing out the fact that there's no preschool playground unlike the other new schools, elementary schools we built. That may be one of the two things.
That's exactly what we have in mind.
So, I was just going to bring that up for consideration as you go forward with this.
Mr. Mayor, just one last question.
Yes, Counselor Caulfield.
Many of us attended first night out at, throughout the city in Patekot, and we all traveled to the new Maury School. And Counselor Mendonza and Counselor Mercier and I were discussing the condition of the landscaping at that school. It seems to me that all the loom that was once there, I mean, you can't grow grass on gravel. I'd like to find out what the issues are there. I mean, I know we had a hot summer, but I noticed gravel under the grass that's struggling to grow. You can't grow grass in gravel, so I don't know who the landscaper was, but I don't think we got our monies worth there.
Thank you. All those in favor of referring the loan order to a public hearing on October 5, signify by saying aye. Oppose, it's a vote. Thank you. Moving on, any subcommittee reports this evening? Counselor Elliott?
Mayor, there was not, I don't have a subcommittee report, but we did have a joint finance subcommittee scheduled with the school committee, and that was, it was rescheduled, it was postponed to a later date, a result of the lack of clerk or assistant clerk. So, we'll reschedule that, I don't know, sometime in October, Mr. Manager, and we'll get notification.
Okay, thank you. Any other reports? Hearing none, except the report as a report of progress, signify by saying aye. Oppose, it's a vote. Under petitions, the first petition from Attorney Paul Ashief Chabu Engineering, request zoning change at 301 Chesford Street. Motion by Counselor Murphy, second by Counselor Martin, to refer it to the Lot Department. All those in favor of referring the petition to the Lot Department, signify by saying aye. Oppose, it's a vote. Next item, we do have someone registered to speak, Elizabeth McPherson, 88B Street, requests counsel to address the council regarding sodium fluoride in water supply. Elizabeth McPherson, please come to the podium. I would like to remind you that we do have a five-minute rule here, so the podium is yours for the next five minutes. Thank you.
Okay, well, I was told by my friends that what I have to say would fall on deaf ears, and I hope that's not true, because this is very, very.
Microphone.
This is very, very important. Sodium fluoride, does anyone in the room know where it comes from and what it is? No, I didn't think so. Because since 1950, we've been told that it is good for us and it prevents cavities. When reality tells us that sodium fluoride is a waste byproduct of the nuclear, aluminum, and phosphate fertilizer industry, it's poison. During 9/11, homeland security was tracing all the trucks that carry fluoride, because they were afraid they were going to be blown up, because the poison is so toxic. I've been doing this for three years now, working with people in different cities, and in the New Hampshire Free Press, on the cover you will see, poison in your tap water, okay? It's very hard to believe this, because our government is complicit in this, but then you have to understand that they allowed us to be poisoned with lead in our gas, with Freon, asbestos, DDT. They advocated and allowed the glamorization of smoking cigarettes. Sodium fluoride was introduced in Lowell on June 1 of 1982. It is actually scraped from the inside of smokestacks in Florida, the phosphate fertilizer plants. It is the active ingredient in rat poisons, in pesticides, in seron nerve gas, and even in pharmaceutical products such as Prozac. It has to be scraped, because if there's an overabundance of the stuff leaking into the air, it'll kill everything around it, like it did in Philadelphia, where they had a major accident and killed many, many people. I hope this really frightens you, because it's a frightening thing. We're trying to get to the city councils so that we get this stuff out of our water supply, city by city. It is just an unbelievable poison. The Mullenex Research Center in Boston claims that fluoride is a toxic threat to children. It's a neurotoxin. The Greater Boston's chapter of Physicians for Social Responsibility believes that fluoride is responsible for learning, developmental, and behavioral disabilities such as AD and D in children. In 2005, the Harvard School of Dental Health found that fluoride in tap water directly contributes to causing bone cancer in young boys between the ages of five and 20. The EPA headquarters professional union made up of scientists and other professionals opposed community fluoridation. Pediatricians recommend that infant farmers not be prepared with fluoridated water, because unlike what you've been taught to believe, it is a general poisoning of the water supply. I have pictures of bags of sodium being delivered to water plants, and you see on it, it says danger, toxic if ingested. Now, this is in your toothpaste, it's in your food, it's in the water supply, it's in rugs, it's in clothing, it's incorporated in everything, because it saves the Rockefeller conglomerate $65 billion a year for disposing of it, because all they did was dump it into the rivers and streams. And now, when it gets into our water supply, sewage treatment does not take this out, so it gets into the rivers and lakes, it poisons everything, and it is so toxic that they used it in the Manhattan Project, when they made the first atom bomb. That's how bad it is. So, we're trying to get this done, city by city, because all it takes is to turn off a tap, because we are poisoning people. I have just one more thing I'd like to read to you. It says, "The Fluoridation Conspiracy." Here is an unforgettable statement on the effects of fluoride on the human brain. It is from one of the nation's foremost industrial chemists, Charles Elliot Perkins, who was sent by the United States government to help take charge of the giant AG Faber chemical plant in Germany at the end of World War II. The statement is taken from a letter which Mr. Perkins wrote the Lee Foundation for Nutritional Research in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, October 2, 1954. To wit, "The German chemists worked out a very ingenious and far-reaching plan of mass control, which was submitted to and adopted by the German general staff. This plan was to control the population in any given area through mass medication of drinking water supplies. In this scheme of mass control, sodium fluoride occupied a prominent place. However, and I want to make this very definite and very positive, the real reason behind water fluoridation is not to benefit children's teeth. The real purpose behind water fluoridation is to reduce the resistance of the masses to domination and control and loss of liberty. Repeated doses of infinitesimal amounts of fluorine will in time gradually reduce the individual's power to resist domination by slowly poisoning and narcising this area of the brain."
I'm going to ask you to finish up, please.
Okay. Fluorine, any person who drinks artificially fluoridated water for a period of one more year, one year or more, will never again be the same person mentally or physically." So, I wish you would all really take this into consideration, serious consideration, because we're poisoning our own people. Thank you.
Refer this issue to the city manager by Counselor Caulfield, second by Counselor Dakota. Counselor Caulfield?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not taking Elizabeth McPherson's comments lightly, and if you could furnish the council, Mr. Manager, with a medical report, just to make sure the people in the city are safe.
Thank you. All those in favor of referring the issue, I'm sorry, Counselor Mendonza?
Yes, I mean, there's some serious allegations here, and since it relates to the health, I would think it would be appropriate to get the health department's opinion on fluoridation in the water. I know that sodium fluoride is what's being referred to. We appear to use a different form of fluoridation, so I'm not sure if that alters that or not, but I think it would be appropriate to get an opinion from our health department.
Thank you. Counselor Mercier?
The website is fluoridealert.org, and you can educate yourselves on.
And I do appreciate the fact that this woman, resident of the city, came forward to give her point of view. This is what democracy is all about. But having read her statements, I became a little bit alarmed, to the point where I called for information from the water department and spoke to Danny Laif, and you know, on your desk, he provided information for us, because I don't want people at home to think that we're providing unhealthy service by way of turning on your tap water. It's no different than looking through a medical book, because you think you have an ailment, and when you're through looking at all the diseases, by the time you close the book, you think you have everything that you read about, when actually you don't. And I admire the fact that she took the time to come forward, but I did find out from Danny Laif that, and you have some information on your desk, that we do use fluoride in the water. It is one pot per billion, one pot per billion, which is like a 16-by-32 swimming pool and putting a drop of it in that. So, I don't want people at home to think that we're poisoning you, because actually, I'm really not thinking we are.
Well, all you need to do, actually, is read the back of your tube of toothpaste. It tells you, if you ingest the toothpaste, you have to call poison control. Now, why would that be?
I don't know how many people have died lately from brushing their teeth, but be that as it may, I just wanted to offer my.
Thank you.
Point of view, but I admire yours, and I respect you for your opinion.
Refer the matter to the city manager. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, it's a vote. Thank you.
Thank you for listening. Would you like to borrow that?
Next.
I'd like you all to read that. You all need to be educated about this, because it's really, really imperative.
Thank you. Next item, Paul O'Neill, address the city council regarding speeding on High Street. Mr. O'Neill, thank you for your patience.
All right, thank you, city mayor, and Lowell city manager, and city council, and this is, I came to Tewksbury, 1955, and I, five years later, I attended Edith North Rogers, and I went to site-saving class, and I had a great teacher. She taught eight grades, six different subjects. She was a marvelous teacher. But mainly, I'm here tonight is to talk about safety in the City of Lowell. And High Street is one of the big ones. There's School Street, there's Broadway, there's Middlesex Street. Broadway and Church Street are the most aware ones, and I'm aware of the most, because it's so thickly settled. Twenty feet between the buildings, or 10 feet on Church Street by the bus stop there, motorists are going way over the speed limit, and it's just an alarming situation, and no one's enforcing the law. It's getting to be a very, very serious matter. And I do want to say that winter is approaching, and there is no stopping on ice. It's pretty reckless if you try to. I've driven myself, so I actually know, so I just strongly feel that, that please do, please take concern for ourselves, others, mostly others, and especially youngsters. Good night, and God bless America.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Counselor Caulfield?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to deny that we don't have speeding in the city. We do. But I'll also bring forward, under the leadership of Police Chief Ken Lavalley, the traffic violations have increased by 25% over last year. And it was in his report that he gave to the council, and if you go on the Lowell Connector, you better not go over 65 miles an hour, because you will be pulled over, and throughout the city, the people are being stopped, and they're receiving a citation for either going to a stop sign, or speeding, or whatever. And the increases, Mr. Manager, I think it goes into seven or $800,000 or something like that, that they've increased in parking and traffic violations. So, is there speeding? Yes, but the Lowell Police Department is addressing that very vigorously.
Thank you, Counselor Caulfield. Any other discussion? Refer to the city manager for the appropriate action by Counselor Mendonza, second by Counselor Martin. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, it's a vote. Next items on the agenda, we actually have four conduit locations. Verizon to place 60 feet of conduit in River Place. National Bridge to maintain underground conduit in Lincoln and Maple Streets. Comcast of New England requests conduit in Prescott Street, George Street, and Middlesex Street. And the last one, Light Tower Fiber Networks, place 31 feet on Middlesex Street. All of these have to get referred to a public hearing, scheduled for September 28 by Counselor Broderick, second by Counselor Caulfield. All those in favor of sending these four requests to a public hearing, signify by saying aye. Oppose, it's a vote. Thank you. We have two claims for property damage. Refer those to the Lot Department by Counselor Murphy, second by Counselor Mendonza. All those in favor of sending those on to the Lot Department, signify by saying aye. Oppose, it's a vote. Thank you. Moving on to the motion, part of the agenda, the first motion by Counselor Caulfield. Thank you. City council requests the city manager to report on the status of the vacant lot at the corner of Nickel Street and Westford Street, seconded by Counselor Dakota. Counselor Caulfield?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and before I address the motion, I want to thank the manager for addressing some of the street conditions in the Lowell Highlands. Fernal Street, and they haven't been addressed in decades, so I want to thank you for that. The corner of Nicholson Westford Street, where a huge building was burnt out, it was burnt out for at least two or three years, and we finally get it demolished, but the parcel of land is starting to look as bad as the burnt-out building. It's deteriorating with weeds and so forth. And I was asked by the Lowell Highlands Neighborhood Association to bring this motion forward, A, who owns the property? Does the city own it? B, what can we do with it to, you know, either create green space, or off-street parking, or do something with the building that the land is positive? And that's the gist. And that's the gist of the motion.
Thank you, Councilor Carfield. Any other discussions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Post the vote. Next motion by Councilor Carfield. Motion, City Council requests the city manager have the proper department place a stop sign at the corner of Seneca Street and Nelson Street, seconded by Councilor Broderick. Councilor Carfield?
Motion speaks for itself, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Carfield. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Post the vote. Next motion by Councilor Mercier. Motion, request that the City Council take appropriate action to have the city-owned property at the corner of VFW Highway and Bridge Street be dedicated as the Frank J. Lyons Memorial Park, seconded by Councilor Carfield. Councilor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to request that the land at the VFW Highway and at the end of the Cox Bridge be dedicated as the Frank J. Lyons Memorial Park and be used as a passive park in honor of a young 22-year-old veteran killed in World War I in France, leaving behind his young widow, Irene Lyons, and a six-week-old daughter he never saw. This veteran Frank Lyons paid the ultimate sacrifice and this would be a fitting honor to his memory. And this is a request of some veterans, Franco-American veterans. I'd like to refer this motion to not only the Parks and Recreation Subcommittee, which I'd like to call, I don't know, next week so that I could get that back and at the same time, put it before the Board of Parks for their monthly meeting, which is the last Wednesday in the month, which would be September 29. So if I could refer it to the Parks Subcommittee and the Board of Parks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Mercier. Manager Lynch?
If, just if I may, Councilor, I think this is an excellent motion. And we've been working, the city's been working to do some improvements over in that area.
That's right.
As part of a long-term plan, beautification. So this will go in very nicely.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Post the vote. Thank you. Next motion by Councilor Mercier. Motion, request that the city take the appropriate actions to have the land where the Christian Hill Water Tower will be erected used as a passive park for all to use. Seconded by Councilor Carfield. Councilor Mercier?
Similar to the previous motion, if we could just take a look at that as well, refer that to the Parks and Recreation Subcommittee and then forward it to the Board of Parks if it's approved at our Parks and Recreation Subcommittee. I don't know if we could, but you know, what the neighbors have gone through is to, you know, and it's kind of tough, you know, not having communication, that I think it would be only as a peace offering to say you've been through a lot, would like to leave that as a passive park and beautify it for you. So that's the gist of that motion as well.
Councilor Carfield? Councilor Carfield, then, may I adjourn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the motion, during the neighborhood Subcommittee meetings, Councilor Mercier, I and Councilor Broderick asked that question numerous times to Jim Rovard to see if there's ways or means we could upgrade that facility and make it into a passive park. So that really is in the works, so...
Oh, I don't know if it's in the works. That's why I made the motion, is say, is it designated for that? I don't know if it is or not.
Manager Lynch?
It is, it's in the works in terms of the planning process. But I think Councilor Mercier's motion is a good one in terms of keeping the council up to speed on the plans as they evolve. And be happy to have Woodward and Curran and the Water Department appear before the Subcommittee, give an update. It may not be quite ready yet for going to the Board of Parks. And I'm not sure if that's a step that's actually needed. More importantly, I think we need to finish the design work and bring the council up to speed on that.
Well, I think it's more or less, this motion is a commitment to try to do that.
And I think, Councilor, I think it's an excellent motion and one that we are pulling together some of the plans for that. And I'm happy to...
I'm not trying to take anything away from the Neighborhood Traffic Subcommittee. I'm not trying to say that I'm stepping over your toes by doing this. I'm just bringing it forward because nothing was...
Here we go again.
Nothing was in place. I don't know. I'm just trying to cement it, is what I'm trying to do.
I think it's a good motion.
Councilor Broderick?
I think it's a good motion. I just had the question of, does the Board of Parks have jurisdiction yet if it's not a park? I don't know if we need to take a vote to make it a park and then send it over and do whatever. But basically, I think everyone's on the same page of the improvements that we'd like to see Woodward and Curran propose or for us to make. And I think it's a good motion to move it forward. And I don't think anybody's got stepped on here.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Post the vote. Next motion by Councilor Mendonza. Motion, City Council requests the city manager to draft an unacceptable street policy ordinance for council consideration that will prevent any new unacceptable streets and provide a process for accepting the unacceptable streets presently in existence. Seconded by Councilor Mercier. Councilor Mendonza?
Yes, this, the et cetera part is really the important part, as you read there, the actual details. This came about as a result of a question from a resident of the street, thought the street was deplorable, was wondering, when was the city going to do something? So I sent a question to the city manager, which Henry Marchand responded to. But the response was that it was an unacceptable street. And that's why it wasn't even on the repaving list anywhere because we couldn't use the Chapter 70 funds for it. And as we saw in the communication from the manager in our packet today regarding Stevens Street, that our budget for repaving, whether it be streets or sidewalks, is $1 million from the Chapter 90 or about $50,000 from CDBG. And the cost of repaving the street is $100,000 or so. So its only hope is through Chapter 90. And in order to do streets with Chapter 90, they have to be an accepted street.
Yeah.
So this, of course, is one street. I suspect we have a much larger issue with unacceptable streets. And that's why I decided to go about it in this way. If there is already a process in place, I didn't know about it. So maybe we can be educated about that. But if necessary, I was asking that the city manager or the appropriate department draft up either a policy or an ordinance, whatever's more appropriate, for A, making sure we prevent any new occurrences of unacceptable streets. And that we then have a process in place for systematically accepting the streets we have. And then this one in particular has been there as long as I can remember. And the city has allowed many developments or subdivisions off of the street of which it is the only access to these new streets. And so the much higher traffic now is making it even worse and beating up the street. It's probably not up to standards as far as widths go in some locations. It narrows. And there's brush and there's not sidewalks and that sort of thing. So the purpose of my motion is so that we can systematically address these going forward. It may not be this fiscal year because the funds weren't allocated. But at least we could plan on having some way of addressing these going forward in future fiscal years.
Councilor Mercier?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a very good motion because some time ago, many years ago, there was a concern about repaving Raven Road. And Raven Road was not an accepted street as well. So I said, well, could we accept it? It isn't as easy as just saying, "Accept it." There's got to go measurements and the city engineers have to get out there. Westerly this way and northerly that way. And it's really a lot of work. So that, so much so that it happened time and time again that this street wasn't accepted, that wasn't accepted. Bluebird Terrace, Nightingale Terrace, up in Pottengaville. We know all the particular streets. When you think that a street is accepted, it isn't. And then you can't use it, you have to go to Chapter 90 money. You can't do that if the street isn't accepted. So we do know that, and that's a very good motion. But I did at the time ask, could we take it upon ourselves to try to accept a few streets each year to get that large number down as we're going along? So in the past, we have been accepting a few streets, like three streets per year. And I'd like it to continue because that's very important. And what steps are in place so that it doesn't happen again? So that's very good. And so he kind of reinforced the thoughts that I had some time ago.
Manager Lynch?
I was going to actually comment very similar to Councilor Mercier, that in fact, this is a problem. I won't say it's unique to the city of Lowell, although I do think the extent of these streets that are unacceptable that one would think would be accepted is, seems high. But Councilor Mercier did, I remember, file a motion asking us to work on that going back, I think, three or four years ago now. And we have been coming in with streets on a regular basis. And the city engineer is here. And it is a project that we try to work on during the non-construction season to, you know, do the necessary work. It is, as Councilor Mercier pointed out, not just a matter of taking a simple vote. There is a whole process involving, or surveying the roadway, laying out a plan, which then has to be recorded. And it has to be formal votes that we go through the process. And that's, we have made some progress on that. We're not as far along certainly as we would like. We have lost some staff in the engineer's office, which has reduced our ability to move forward on this as well as a number of other projects. But Lisa will tell you, it is a question that I put forward to her on a regular basis. How are we doing with the unacceptable streets? There should not be an abundance and there really shouldn't be any new unacceptable streets. All of those should be handled under the subdivision ordinances of the city. But there may be private ways. But there shouldn't be any new public ways that are unacceptable. Those should go through the process. But Lisa, would you like to comment? We will get a more formal report on both aspects of this to the...
And I think I have put together an outline on that. It may be prior to Mr. Mendonza coming on the council. So I'll pull all my old files out and submit them again. In addition to the paving issue, the number of miles of accepted streets comes into play in the formula for Chapter 90. So it's a loop. You can't pave it unless it's accepted. And once it's accepted, now you get money for it. So the first thing that we did was the low-hanging fruit. We went through the list of streets that we had all, we as a city had already accepted, but hadn't told Mass Highway about. So the first thing we did was compile that list and send that in. So this coming year, there should be a little bit higher, there'll be a higher mile, linear miles of road in the next year that we go through. The next thing that we did was looked at subdivisions that had gone through Planning Board and had been accepted and that the developer had done the survey and the ASBILs and prepared all the documents. And then, and that's what we're working on right now, is trying to compile all of that. Where they've done the work, we'll just have to do the recording, check them, make sure that everything meets our standards. And then we'll work on recording that grouping of it. The third grouping is the older streets that have never been accepted for one reason or another. We just don't know why. And there are, it's almost half the streets in the city. It's like 46 or 47 percent. It's not unique to Lowell. Everyone in the state has unacceptable roads. I don't know if they all have that higher percentage. But that's the third group that we'll be starting on when we finish the group that we're working on now. So we're trying to go at it in pieces, taking into consideration, we don't have a lot of staff to dedicate to this. So for the next batch, when it requires a lot of survey work, we don't have a registered land surveyor on staff. That's something that we'll have to find a funding source for somewhere. And that's going to take quite a while to knock off some of those because the data just doesn't exist for some of these streets.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor of Councilor Mendonza's motion signify by saying aye. Post the vote. The last motion of the evening by Councilor Murphy. Motion, City Council requests the city manager to explore the potential for a system of bus shelters, bike racks with the LRTA and have DPD review corresponding plan for transit overlay districts surrounding them. Seconded by Councilor Broderick. Councilor Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was tempted to file this under unresponsive motions because my grandfather, back in the 1950s, had filed a similar motion. I think we only have about one bus shelter in the city. But as a manager, I don't think was probably even born then. And my grandfather is certainly not expecting a response. I think it's probably fair to do it this way. The idea is to look into a potential for a system of bus shelters, beginning with at least one in each of the neighborhoods and downtown. That would be probably designed in large part by the residents themselves, by the businesses there themselves, to give the various neighborhoods a sense of identity, to give those who are coming to those neighborhoods a sense of direction. Because once people find themselves in certain neighborhoods, there are no maps. You can't find your way through. To give people a sense, a better sense of what the schedules are because they're all crisscrossed and you can never figure out whether or not you're going to end up at Gallagher Terminal when the train is leaving or 10 minutes afterwards. So to have maps, schedules, as well as, you know, potentially advertising from the local businesses on those main business corridors, whether they be Sentinel, you know, the Lowell Highlands, Back Central, as a way, in part, to drive some economic development there. The more that people understand what is available to them through those neighborhoods, the more likely they are to visit them and come back again. And also to really further our goal here in the city of sustainability, that the more people have an opportunity to use public transportation and reduce their emissions, the better. Certainly, I think this would reduce the minutes that we spent earlier this evening on our meeting just by getting away from car dependency. And so there are a number of different ways. The second part of the motion is to look at transit overlay districts within a certain radius of these bus shelters, whether it be a half-mile or, you know, a full mile, where minimum parking requirements might be lowered so that more affordable housing units can come in. You know, the incentive there being that, you know, less space would be taken up, more units can be put in. And people would be greater encouraged to use the public transit system. So essentially, obviously, this is more of a long-term project. And it's looking towards trying to get an idea of whether or not there's some opportunities out there. It's certainly in keeping with the state's newer philosophy of transit-oriented development and smart growth. And certainly, the city has been very supportive of that. And so I think that if, you know, we can identify some funds through the state, through the LRTA, matching funds perhaps through the city and even the local businesses, you know, being able to advertise in those shelters that we might be able to, you know, begin the process for a project there.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Murphy. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.